Everybody ready?
Well, yep.
Did someone else join on the conference call line?
When you said six, you're counting Eileen? Scott, excuse me. Okay. I guess she's still working on the connection.
Well, that or she might be just doing by voice. I'm not sure. I, who do we have joining us on the conference call line? I know we have Mayor Ravella.
This is Bob Paul.
Hi, Bob.
Scott, did you get a Zoom invite for this?
Yeah, Friday morning.
Okay, I'm trying to find. That's why.
I think it was oh dark thirty in the morning, about seven, seven thirty.
Yeah, it was Friday morning. I found it.
Friday morning, yeah.
And it was on, it was in the Outlook address, to his Outlook address.
Yeah, it was to your Outlook address, your, your borough.
Oh, yeah, good point. Yeah, well, even so, yeah, okay.
It was Friday, Friday, June 12th at seven forty-eight AM.
Thanks, Scott.
Hello, dive the email button, Friday, June 12th at seven forty-eight AM. I received mine for the Zoom and for the meeting.
Should we wait, Scott, or do you want to go?
Well, it sounds like we have Mayor Ravella, Councilman Paul, although he might be switching over to Zoom, I'm not sure, and Councilman Robinson on the conference call line, and you've got five, six on Zoom. I don't know if Eileen is having trouble with the audio, or if she's just joining by by voice. Eileen, can you hear us or no? Yes, we won't know if you can.
She has a picture of a very patriotic dog, though.
Yes. It is seven oh two, Mr. President. Would you like to give it another minute, or?
Um, is, is Mr. Paul still with us, or is he?
Yeah, I'm still with you, and I'm connecting on the Zoom.
Okay.
He, he's going both ways.
Okay.
Exactly. Exactly. Yeah.
Oh, yep. There you go.
Okay, so how many council members do we have on?
Well, it sounds like we just either gained one or lost one. How about, how about I'll do the roll call?
Physically, six. The others, two, I don't know.
Well, let me open, do a roll call. I see, I see Bob, so.
Yep, do, do your thing, and then we'll do the roll call, and we'll know who we have.
Okay, I'm gonna call to order the Borough Council meet, regular meeting for June fifteenth. Uh, can we all stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance? I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
God.
I decided to say that a little bit silently since we were all on different timeframes.
Is that your form of protest, Nancy?
Oh, not at all, not at all. No, just, we all sounded, we sounded a little garbled.
Yes, we did. Can, uh, we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Ravella.
Here, I'm with you.
Yep, Mr. Bowers.
Here.
Ms. Dreisbach. Ms. Dreisbach. Ms. Alahou.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Mr. Paul.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Sherlock.
Here.
Mr. Jaeger.
Here.
Do we have your junior council person by any chance? Okay. We have the solicitor and the manager. Okay.
All right, uh, item four, announcements and presentations. I'm assuming we don't have any?
No presentation, and the only announcement is, uh, are, can, can we have a brief executive session?
Yes.
At the end of the meeting. Okay, I've got a handful of Personnel Matters I need to brief you guys on.
Okay, so we're going to have an executive session at the end of the agenda items, right?
Yes.
And, uh, it's for-
Back into public.
For personnel issues?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to five, which is public comment. Do we have any?
I believe we have.
We have you, Cat.
Kathy Panzita. And actually, before you start, if you'll bear with me a moment, I need to reposition.
Oh, that, I'll have to check that. I'm not sure if it's on. It should be on. I turned it on.
Yep.
Catherine Panzita for White Hill Press Avenue. Um, I did notice under nine D, there's a motion to sell thirty Hill Press Avenue. And my question was, when I rode down the street, I first saw thirty as the number on the billboard. So it was my eyes seeing it as a zero, but what exact parcel is that? Is that the Bulldogs building? And is that also the Lincoln, uh, lot attached to it, under that one, parcel number two, four, three, zero, nine, zero, eight, at that point? And, um, then I have some questions about the ordinance with the chief of police. In the copy I received from email from the borough on Friday, when requested, um, there's a few sections under section one N and under section one Q. They encourage the boroughs internal affairs policy and the Marshall Borough Police Department policies and procedures. I'd like to know what they are and have to learn, and if you choose to follow this resolution, just so I have a date of the last copy of when they were accepted. I probably should make the assumption that all council will those two items and round the board this evening. Um, and don't like, under section one J, the very last one, that you are asking the police chief that he shall not make such requests directly to council. I find that inappropriate and unprofessional, and I also feel that anyone in her position should be able to see see any correspondence to anybody they care for for any action. Um, under section one O, I'd like to know, does that comply with the current social services items? And that is in reference to complaints written or verbal from the police office. Under supervisory duties, there is no reference to any secretaries or office workers. I guess they are not under supervisory duties. Do the secretary and office workers in the police department, who do they report to? Um, I see two A, under supervisory is all official duties as a police officer. Actually, that means you are always active. I also saw under supervisory section H, this is in reference to the chief, if he is the emergency management coordinator. I can't imagine anybody else here within the borough being your emergency management coordinator, as probably all those people don't cover under those actions. It's not like I'm the fire chief, it's not like I'm the emergency coordinator. I would feel that any council would have their police chief with those qualifications as the borough's emergency management coordinator. So my other question was, in that whole section, have you really read it and said it references if the chief is the EM, say, but then it says, should the chief be unable to execute the duties than any other person designated by council? I find that a potential problem in timing in the event of a true disaster. I'd like to see, for some reason, whoever the ordinance is your police chief, and if you were the EM, say, for some reason, I'd like to see council try to get together to then have any other person designated. I don't have any problems with two or three, because they're usually your standard out. Thank you very much, and have a nice night.
Oops.
Is there anyone else?
Is there anyone on the conference call line for public comment? There appears to be no further public comment.
Do either you or the solicitor wish to clarify any of the questions that you had, or should we move on?
Um, we can move on. I can, I can say that, um, I think that one of the questions raised was about the internal affairs policy. Uh, council just adopted an internal affairs policy late last year, I think it was December. So I know that's fresh in everyone's mind. As for the police department policies, I don't know the date which they were adopted. In fact, there are probably several staggered dates, not all one date. And the reference about not making, uh, requests directly to council, that actually is verbatim from the police chief's employment agreement. That's not something that was conjured up.
Correct.
Um, and the emergency management coordinator language is pretty standard. And we actually have a deputy emergency management coordinator, the fire chief.
Yes.
So if something were to incapacitate the police chief, the fire chief would serve, uh, in that role. Although, I think everybody knows this, the state actually discourages municipalities from appointing first responders and the heads of first responding agencies as their emergency management coordinators, uh, because they're going to be busy dealing with an emergency. But in small towns, you know, we don't have a very deep bench of personnel, so it, uh, it often ends up being the police chief or the fire chief. So, um, I think that's all I can add off the top of my head.
Okay. All right, there's no more public comment. We're gonna move on to six, which is approval of the minutes. Six A is approval of the minutes for the Mars, the Borough Council Regular Meeting of February eighteenth, twenty twenty. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Um, I do. Um, there's- There seems to be, um, some, some things missing out of, out of that meeting. Um, for, for instance, uh, the mayor was talking about, um, the Bristol Borough noise policy. That is not in these minutes. Um, if you go down to unfinished business, it says there was no discussions, but there was a rather, um, two, two large discussions about the traffic study on South Pennsylvania Avenue and, um, the Park Avenue parking. And none of these items are in that, are, are in these regular minutes.
Yeah, we, we don't do verbatim minutes because the meetings are recorded. We do summary minutes, and they typically only include official action taken. Or else your, or else your minutes would be seventy-five pages long versus, I believe, the one you're referring to is twenty-five pages.
It says, uh, under, under, um, unfinished business, it says nothing was discussed, and there were two discussions. Even if you just wrote, discuss traffic study, discuss Park Avenue, uh, but there's nothing noted there at all.
Yeah, we, we could include lots of discussion took place. See video. Um, that certainly is nothing we can do.
Yeah, the video is not the official, um, minutes, though. The, the written minutes are the official minutes.
Right.
Yeah. So, that's, that's what I noticed. Um, and sometimes, well, then we have to talk about being consistent because in some of these motions, some of these motions have, when somebody has, um, you know, it'll say, um, you know, anybody have any comments? Some of those motions have comments and some of them don't. So I don't know why that would happen. I would think that we would want to be consistent in our minutes.
I think there was, I think there was another question raised as well. Mr. Robinson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I had a question about, about something that was, that wasn't in the minutes, but you answered the, uh, you, you answered the, the question about how it's a summary of the official minutes. I, I just, I, I've noticed that I was, I was referred to or I was called an idiot for, um, saying that there was, uh, truck traffic in front of my house on North Pennsylvania Avenue. I didn't see that in the minutes. Um, so I just wanted to see it, but you already answered a question about it being a summary, so.
Oh, okay.
Another, another council person called me an idiot for stating that I have truck traffic in front of my house. And, you know, that happened at the meeting, and it wasn't, it wasn't in the minutes. When I have, I have cameras on my house, I'll be more than happy to provide video of trucks going in front of my house all day on North Pennsylvania Avenue.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's the kind of stuff that the Borough Secretary can take some liberties with in preparing the minutes because, uh, the Commonwealth requires certain things in your official meeting minutes. And, uh, we capture what is necessary.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Uh, would, would everybody be opposed to just adding the line that there was discussion regarding the traffic on Pennsylvania Avenue and where we were going with that? Because we have written letters, uh, request after that conversation, didn't we, did we not? Or is that prior? I mean, you might have to refresh my memory.
We, we did it after one of them. I believe it was discussed a couple times.
Yeah, and also, um, also the Park Avenue, um, situation, that, that, that needs to be put in there as well because there was a follow-up that the Policy Committee would be looking into, uh, getting signage saying no parking or whatever decision that they would be making. So I think those things have to be added.
Okay, well, if you want to email them over to the office, we'll incorporate, um, whatever comments you guys want added.
So may I change, I don't, was I the first, did I make the motion or not? Because I didn't hear who called it. I was just gonna-
I believe you did, yes.
Okay, then-
And I believe Justin.
Can I just, can I adjust it to say, uh, to include the two subjects that were, you know, discussed with regards to, um, conversations ensued about truck traffic and Park, and Park Avenue, uh, policy regarding signage? That's, to be brief.
If that's, if that's all right with our solicitor.
It's fine with us, absolutely.
So we're gonna do approval of the minutes, uh, with, with added items.
Approval of it, approval of the minutes as amended.
Okay. And we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we want to do a roll call? Do we want to just do a voice book?
You can do them by acclamation.
Okay.
Can I make a comment before we go to vote?
I'm sorry, yes, do you have any more?
Uh, not specific to this, but just in the future, um, you guys can email this into the Borough Manager prior to the meeting so that it's included and resent out. You don't have to wait to the meeting to do this. Uh, I feel bad for the public because these are February's meetings. I've talked to Scott multiple times. He's got, you know, lower staffing due to COVID nineteen, and it wasn't a priority to get him done. But right now, it's June, and we don't have February's meeting minutes up to date. So if this were to take another turn where we decided not to approve them, uh, because something was skipped, maybe just keep that in mind in the future. You can email in comments ahead of time.
I appreciate that comment, Justin, and it's true. But at the same time, I think you'd have to have acclamation by everybody to even agree to that, right? I mean, just because I or Helen or Mike or you send something in, I'm not sure that it would be automatically considered without discussion, or would it? Maybe I'm wrong.
It would. It would be, it would be presented, it would be noted when we present the minutes, that by the way, these change, there, we made further changes since we originally circulated the minutes, or presumably Scott's staff might circulate revised minutes before that.
Revised minutes, yeah.
Hopefully, we'd be voting on the revised minutes.
Yeah, but they might not be revised. You would, if they sent them in early enough, you would just get them and not even know, so.
Nancy, if they're not, if, if, if the minutes are ever not to anyone's satisfaction, they can always, at the meeting, I think the suggestion was, and we used to do this when I was in New Hope too, when you get, you have these minutes way in advance, you don't like if something's not proper. I mean, people make mistakes, or they, you know, they, different priorities. Just call the manager or email the manager, and, and then if the manager doesn't do something, then you, then you can bring it up publicly at a meeting. It makes sense. Every, that way, everybody is, is happy.
Yeah, you'll, you'll frequently notice in your deliveries that the minutes will say draft one at the top or draft two at the top. If we get a bunch of edits that are substantive, not commas and, uh, periods, uh, it'll be recirculated to council a second time. Just lately, we've been one-hit wonders, and we've been able to bang these out in one shot, but that's not always the case.
Just a suggestion, if you circulate revised minutes, in addition to putting draft two or whatever, also put a date on it. It'll help.
Okay, any more comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? All right, motion passes. Uh, six B, Borough Council Emergency Meeting of March thirty-first, twenty twenty. Can I have a motion?
Moved.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Mr. Robinson seconded. I believe Mr. Bowers moved it.
Yes. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Stenched? Six C, approval of the minutes for the Borough Council Emergency Meeting of April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
So, second.
Mr. Robinson moved it.
No, I think Mr. Jaeger moved it, and-
There was.
Oh, sorry.
And, uh, Ms. Sherlock seconded. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stenched? Motion passes. Onto reports. Eight A is the mayor's report.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me.
I think we skipped seven.
Oh, we did, I'm sorry.
Skip seven.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor, we skipped number seven. Let us come right back to you.
Seven A is the Treasurer's report. Everyone had that in their, their packet. Is there anything you want to discuss about it while we hear? All right, seven B, call for a motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Good luck with that one, Scott.
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
I think it was Mr. Paul and then, um, Ms. Sherlock.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Um, actually, I do. I will try to be as brief as possible. Um, I just, well, actually, this one's for Mike, I guess. We still have the SRO figure in there, the eleven thousand dollars on, on page one. It's listed as an asset. Is that money we're holding from something or somewhere for the school resource officer? I'm just wondering what that figure is for. It's page one?
Do you have that with you?
That's in the asset column. That's not a revenue column. That's what's rolled over every year, and then auditors adjust.
Oh.
That's not a revenue.
That's what I said. It's in, it's in the assets, so.
Yeah, that, that goes back to when the program was started, and it's been there ever since.
Okay, so, I guess that's good to know for any future SRO activity.
Maybe the borough got seed money in the beginning to start it. I have, I have no idea. We can go back and look in the history of it.
Okay, also, uh, just have a, just, just a notation with regards to, uh, the bills and where we are with, um, Gilmore and Associates. Our engineering percent right now is at a hundred and ninety-three percent. We paid Gilmore thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars just this month for the activity that they've had. I just feel we have to, we have to, we have to put the brakes on. We overspent by five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars last year, as our auditor mentioned in our last meeting. And, um, and our, and our attorney fees are at a hundred and twenty-seven percent. So now realize our, the Flagor Associates, that, that's not a lot of yours. Uh, that has to do with what we, you know, any additional things that we put on there and the, and the police, and that was, you know, that's, uh, that's all attorneys, and for all reasons. But I'm, I'm just asking that, that this council, uh, consider where, where we are with our money or without our money, I should say. So, um, again, um, that five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, that reflects nine-plus mils that we spent that we didn't even have.
Yeah, but keep in mind, most of that money isn't borough tax money. Most of that money is from grant funding sources, not borough tax dollars.
I, I realize that.
Zero, it's zero mils.
Zero mils. We keep saying that, that we overspent, but if you look at the year-end, um, report, we didn't overspend. We spent what we had to spend. Um, so I'm not sure how you're defining that as a deficit. When you're looking at the audit, they're looking at a time period. But there's things that you're not taking into consideration. When you look at the year from start to finish, we didn't overspend.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, Mike, and I, I'm agreeing that we're talking grants, but in order to get the grants of, you know, certain grants, there, there is a cost to pay, and there's sometimes matches. Very time, very oftentimes matches. So I just don't know that, I don't know that all grants give us the, um, I, I don't know that, I don't know that they're all that beneficial, or as beneficial as everyone believes that they might be. And I just think that we have to pay attention to not just the grants, to, to where we're, we're spending our money. And, and so I'm asking people to pay more attention to it. That's all.
I certainly think that that's a fair point of view. Um, however, the council always has the option of appropriating money and funding capital improvement projects that are the borough's responsibility directly. You do not have to be dependent upon grant funding in order to pay for them. However, in order to do that, you're gonna have to raise property taxes.
Taxes, exactly.
Right.
So.
So it's from one bushel or from the other?
And, and, you know, uh, with four years without any increase, it's gonna start to show. And, um, it, it already has, but it's all, it's gonna start to show some more, so.
Do we anticipate some of the grants that they put in this year, that we're gonna get them this year?
Yeah, we, we should be hearing soon about, uh, CDBG, depending on, of course, the county and, um, you know, the COVID nineteen, uh, priority. Uh, some of the state ones, some of the announcements and the timing of them might be a little delayed compared to past years because their focus is elsewhere right now, so, um, it's hard to say.
And the one, the ones that are on the motions this evening, uh, that's like one point one million dollars we're asking for, and I'm not sure that that money will be there. But, um, the, uh, especially in this, you know, where, where we sit, which you just mentioned about the COVID and, and, uh, you know, people still, and, and the PPP, I, I just don't know that this- and, and, uh, you know, people still, and the PPP, I, I just don't know that the state has the, that kind of money. Plus, these are, we're reapplying for these. We already applied for them before and didn't get them, and now we're reapplying.
Right, correct. And, and Arlie is a separate fund. Arlie is the automated red light enforcement money uh, that comes from the fines. It's automatically generated um, in Philadelphia and elsewhere through the, um, the camera program. So they would not have announced that they're accepting grants for these projects if they didn't have the money to fund them. But that doesn't also mean they're compelled to award any or as many as they have customarily.
I, I have an operational question. What, the, the, the lights that we're referring, that we're going to look at this evening in this, this one, uh, this one grant, did we do any, um, history on those lights? Like, I, I thought, I thought most of our lights already had the, the, the emergency system uh, where they turn, at least, uh, the one, you're shaking your head. Are you saying none of them?
The ones we have targeted do not have.
Okay, and?
Anything. We, we've got one that's running on a computer loaned to us by a contractor. That's Philadelphia Avenue. It's being held together with duct tape.
Okay.
You got the, the one up here, uh, Pennsylvania and Trent Avenue that qualifies as an antique, I think. Um, yeah, they're in horrible condition.
Okay, so it's the one, I guess, on Plaza Boulevard that actually has the, uh, the emergency lighting, I believe.
That might have preemption, that one. I'm not sure. Alora, are you with us yet?
Hi, Scott. I'm here.
Hi. Uh, I, I know there, that one of the Arlie grants covers, uh, preemption and backup battery power and generator ports, or is it six signals, Alora?
Yeah.
Six intersections? So that's six intersections that don't have it.
Okay, well, which is good because they're, they're not identified in this either, which I, was another little bone of contention. I mean, we, we're voting, but we don't know what, what light needs what. So.
Yeah, the, the battery backup and the preemption, I mean, these are things we've been talking about. We've probably been talking about them before I came here, but at least for two and a half years. And, and I know they're of interest to the EMS squad and the fire company and, and probably the police department too. I'm not sure.
Yes, that is correct. And the two signals, if I may, that you mentioned, they absolutely do not have the preemption.
Right.
On Pennsylvania Avenue, right?
Right. That was the mayor, by the way.
Is this still treasurer's report?
I don't know where we are.
I just wanted to talk about it.
I know we're on.
There was a motion and a second to approve the bill list.
Yes.
I think that's where we are, but I didn't want to interrupt because the conversation was so interesting, so, but it would be my suggestion that we should vote on that and then move on, and then when you get to those items, discuss some.
That's more. Okay.
Okay. I just have a question. Is there, is there any way to have the engineering cost reflect the actual cost that the borough is paying and not what's being paid, you know, out of supplemented by grants? Not when you look at the engineer's expenses at, at, you know, at a particular point, it's a true reflection of what is coming out of, you know, borough money and not grant money? Is there any way for that to be?
Yeah, we've talked about that before. I would love that, if we could segregate that somehow. And, uh, I think our problem here, because we've looked at that before, is the limitations of AMS. And I think once we convert to Edmunds, that's not going to be an issue because we're actually going to generate two different categories of engineering expense. One's going to be direct borough engineering expense, and one is going to be grant-funded borough engineering expense, if you know what I mean.
Right.
So, yes, we.
If I might, if I might just mention, Scott, is there a way that we can manually do that? Because just kicking the can down the road until we get this automatic system, I mean, these are numbers. I mean, I'd like to have these numbers too, and, you know, just telling us that, you know, we'll be able to get them in the future. There's got to be a way we can do that now, that that can be broken down.
Well, we can certainly, we looked into this, uh, back during one of the budget meetings, or even before that, a couple of times, actually. But yeah, we can look at it again if there's a way to do it, uh, so that it's segregated for you. Um, what I don't want to do is spend any money reprogramming AMS, because that's just money we're flushing down the drain. Thus, we're abandoning that, uh, package anyway. Uh, but let, let us tinker with that and see if there's a way where we can, I don't know that we can go backwards, but at least going forward, we might be able to separate those numbers.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
If you look at the bill list, it's basically really already separated on the bill list. It shows what, how much money was for flood mitigation, the road program, the road program, general services.
Definitely break out, and I have.
As usual.
At least our accounting, so that they know which projects are grant-funded and which are not.
And I believe we have $35,000 in the budget is for engineering, okay? And it's kind of a gray area on what we're spending. If we, if it looks like we're spending $300,000 on engineering, you know, that appears that we're way, way over budget. But if, if we're budgeting, we're budgeting tax money going towards the, towards engineering, the grant money. And when you start piling one grant on top of another grant, on top of another grant, then that's where, where stuff gets lost. And then if there's no accounting there, we don't know where we are. Like, if we look at how much money, how much money have we, Nancy pointed out, you know, I'd say it's 137% over budget, okay? How much, you know, how much of that money was actual tax money that went to Gilmore? And how of that money was actual grant money that went to Gilmore? And we break that down, so we were to spend $35,000. We know. That's, that's all, that's all I want to know. I, 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 I mean, I don't think that that should be that. No, we don't. The code enforcement too. We got all these, one big charge for code enforcement, and it's, you know, we can't really break it down. Why can't we break it down? Hey, I mean, I, I do my, I know when my, look at my, my, my budget at home, what I spent on food, what I spent on electric, what I, what I spent with Pico, I know what I spent on gas, I know what I spent on electric. I mean, if I have a gas leak at my house and my Pico bill was $300, but they can't tell me how much the gas was, then I don't know, but they can break that down. I, I, I don't, I cannot understand why these, these, these charges are, or these costs aren't broken down.
Well, actually, let us talk to Gilmore and see if they have a way of where they're already doing it on their end, and maybe we can reverse engineer it and make it work at the beginning, and if not.
They just, they just sent, just mailed something to Mike and have Mike open the envelope and look at it.
Right, and, and, and if they can't, then we will see if we can come up with something on our end so that we can segregate it for you. It's not, it's.
Scott, it's not, if they can't, if they can't, they can figure it out, because that's what we, we want from them. They can, if they can't, then, then it's going to turn into they can, then they're going to figure out how to do it. That's not our job to figure that out. That's their job. We want to know what they're, what, what they're billing us for.
Yeah.
If they can't do it, then they're going to find somebody else that can do it.
Okay, well, why, why don't you give us a chance to try to figure it out? And if that satisfies you, great, and if it doesn't, then we can go from there. But as for the code enforcement comparison, you actually get a monthly report in your delivery on code enforcement and what was spent.
How much we spent on UNOs, how much they billed us on UNOs, how much they billed us on electric, how much they billed us on new building.
Right, that, well, that's, that's detail that's available in our invoices. What I'm talking about is, is the breakdown of what is paid for by the borough versus what is paid for by user fees in the way of permit and inspection costs.
Well, I, I have an issue with their, with their invoicing too, because, I mean, I've looked at their invoices, their individual time, and, you know, it just says examine electrical plans. And, you know, it's just, that's not adequate. I mean, our solicitor gives us, you know, a detailed, you know, invoice down, down to the, you know, point one minute of what he did on a particular thing. And I can't see why we can't at least get, you know, what job it was or some more information in it. Because I, I've looked at them, and it just says two hours examining, you know, electrical plans. And no idea, you know, and it's not just two hours, you know, it's, it's two hours here, it's four hours there, and it's just no idea what, what job, you know, what it relates to, and it, it should be more detailed.
Yeah, we can look at that, though.
All right. One, one last, one last thing, please. Um, I'm certain they can give us a list appropriately. Again, if you look at the bill list, it shows on the bill list. They're all broken down. You've got, uh, you know, $2,075 for a road program, $2,093 for a road program. Uh, the curb cuts, $2,177, so you can see which ones are, um, you know, mandatory versus, the mandatory is the MS4. But you can see what's mandatory versus what's a, uh, a grant. You've got Manor Park, that was a grant. You've got Library Route, $3,466. But I do have a question. They have, there's a general services for $6,000, and there's a general services for $2,700. Now, I had, I, I did ask Mr. Mitchell last, I think I did, at one point, what, what exactly is in general services? What are we being charged for? So what are the general services in addition to these others that they've broken down for us? Like, you've got the flood mitigation is $3,000, so, and some receipt was $8,300. Now, I realize that $8,300 will eventually come out of the, you know, the grant, if, if we get that grant that we're looking for. So, but, but still, we're, we're footing the bill upfront, I guess is what I'm starting to say. And, um, and I, you know, maybe if we see something in the future, a little bit more of a breakdown from them, it will be helpful. But, um, it's, it is frustrating sometimes to just see big numbers and not really know what to put them next to. And, but I do have a question. This is, we're still on the bill list. That's the only reason I'm bringing this up. And I still have a question about, we just did, uh, it's the 2018 MS4 permit. So is that how far behind that works, or why are we doing the 2018 MS4 permit now? Does anybody know?
Alora, can you speak to that?
So that job number is dated 2018, but it's an annual report. So every year, you need to submit an annual update for MS4. Um, you know, I'm not the expert in MS4. My coworker is, but, um, I know that she does her due diligence annually, um, for meeting the requirements of the state.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't even think we're in the window yet for 2019's.
Well, and there's also another charge for $2,300 NPDES permit, MS4. So is that a new permit? Is it a piece of the old permit? Like, that, that didn't explain enough for me. Like, at least with the 2018, you can see it was for a permit. But, anyway, I guess I have barked enough about the money. I will move on. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You know how I feel. I just think that we need to, uh, you know, maybe sometimes we have to put the brakes on. Not on everything, but some things.
Anyone else? All right, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Mr. LaHoe?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. All right, now we move on to eight reports. 8A Mayor's Report.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few different topics I'd like to discuss tonight, or at least report on. Uh, one is the COVID-19. I'm sure everyone is aware that currently we are in the yellow phase. It's my understanding that on June 26th, Bucks County may be moving to the green phase of our governor's plan. Uh, please continue to follow all the proper necessary precautions. Now, I think it's important to be mindful, according to the governor's chart, it's, he, uh, says that this is not a return to the way things were, but a change in behavior to a new normal. I'd like to mention, uh, something about our protest in our state of emergency. Since 2014, when Chief McClay and I were put together for Morrisville, he has always shown me his commitment to our community. Thinking our chief doesn't really seem to me to be quite enough for the handling of the COVID-19 pandemic is proactiveness regarding keeping the borough safe during the nearby protests as well. With efforts to do whatever's possible for the well-being of our residents and our community, we've kept coordinated with the help of state and county. December 13th, he was prepared to protect our borough. In fact, it was the first time this slotting, which is, is actually had been brought into Morrisville. Information tells me, even with very good intentions, there had been a lot of misinformation discussed on social media regarding Morrisville and our nearby protests. I even saw an article that appeared to be based on an alert from our own borough that stated the bridges between Trenton and Morrisville were closed. Of course, that wasn't true. And, uh, probably for residents, and actually this report is for the residents, but in case they're not aware, in a situation where we needed to shelter the place, the county would, they would have issued what is called a reverse 911, and that's when the county would reach out to our residents. And, you know, thank goodness, Marshall didn't see anything of that nature. During the time of the recent protest, I received intel from our chief. I emailed the manager and the council. I tried to keep everyone in the loop. At one point, at the request of Chief McClay, I informed the manager and council that he was going to have to go over his, over this 60-hour rule that council had implemented by bringing in support timers to help protect the community. I wanted all to be aware, not only was this information forthright and transparent, there was no attempt at all made to hide the fact that the chief felt needing to do this. I remind them that the last time that the chief went over, that an attorney was brought in, drafted letters with the intent of me, uh, reprimanding the chief for this. While attempting to keep the manager and council informed, a few council members responded negatively. There's insults directed at me, and I find it to be very unprofessional. An ongoing situation, I suggest, I would, it suggested that I was playing politics. Uh, it's mentioned that being a union member, like that has anything to do with the way the marshal police department's run. Uh, something about suggesting it's okay to victimize someone who can't pass a test to be a component. Please, these aren't constructive comments. Though I have broad shoulders, and I've known someone accustomed to being attacked, attacking the MPD is really unacceptable. For clarity, I do not believe the borough even has any active members that haven't passed the test. We do need to collaborate and work together. And again, I also would like to thank the council members who definitely maintained professionalism during the recent preparations regarding the protest across the bridge. Days after the protest had slowed down, I was questioning whether declaring a state of emergency and having brought in the additional officers. Although there's a statute that clearly says that the mayor or the council can do this, I take the integrity of the office of mayor very serious, and I could not in good conscience declare a state of emergency when there wasn't. The information that I received showed many protests were being scheduled both Pennsylvania and New Jersey. Nothing points to Morrisville being under state of emergency, see this in one of them. Nothing was suggested to me of that. I believe it would have been irresponsible for me to declare a state of emergency with no data, no documents backing this up. It was already a very stressful time for the community. It wasn't going to exacerbate, exaggerate or change the intel to accommodate a state of emergency. Also, there was no recommendation from the people who, uh, I will never declare a state of emergency simply to circumvent a policy of, uh, uh, in the hope to give the chief a green light to bring in more officers. The council wishes to discipline the chief for bringing him in. That's up to them. I would like to thank our borough manager, Mr. Mitchell, for the email he sent explaining that if the council wanted to themselves to do a state of emergency, all they had to do was accomplish four. On a related topic, uh, but not that topic, of nymphs, I'm curious where.
Mayor, Mayor, can you hear me? Mayor, it's Randy, hi. It would have been, it would have been helpful had you sent our office any of the communications that you were sending to council. We, our office never received a single thing from you. Uh, the only thing we got was secondhand from the manager when he was able to get it. The only thing we got was secondhand from the manager when he was able to get it. And that would have been, I think a lot of that could have been prevented had you kept the solicitor's office informed as to what may or may not need to be done, and then we could have all worked together, and you could have avoided this whole situation, hopefully. That's all. I would have liked, same courtesy I would give you, I would send you a copy of something.
Yeah, well, Randy, it's true, I didn't send you anything. I actually always wondered why, when we get notice that there's like four attorneys from your firms that get received, and I'm not down there with, I really don't send you stuff for the simple fact that I don't want the borough to be paid or charged, I should say, to be charged. When you're reading these emails, I did, like I said, I tried to keep the borough council informed. The fourth thing, very proactive, very transparent, and I'm sorry that you, you know.
Well, except this is a serious legal matter, you were going over a borough policy. The solicitor had to be involved, our bills are not excessive, everyone knows that. The bill, the amount that Nancy spoke about earlier, councilwoman spoke about earlier, is we, we don't get that amount. I don't know where that number comes from, but I know our firm's not getting that amount. It's going to other council, obviously, not our firm. Having said that, you have, you can't, it's penny wise dollar foolish. You create a whole big to-do, you get everybody in a, in a hizzy for no reason. All you had to do was send us a copy of your email, or call, or God forbid, pick up the phone and call our office and say, hey, here's the situation, or call the manager, not after it happened, but before it happened, or as it was going to happen, because it was a necessity, for, you know, whatever reason that you may have. So, it's not a matter of money, you just never send us a copy. The truth is, you don't send us copies of things. It's your policy, you do it on purpose, and I think it's bad for the borough. And we don't do that, we send, we send it to the manager so everyone can get a copy of it. And he distributes it to everybody, the council, we send it to you. Whenever I have something serious to discuss, or our office does, you're, you get a copy of it if it's involving a legal matter, or something that has to do with your mayoral duties of the police department. We give, we extend you that courtesy, and all I'm asking you is, would you be kind enough to extend us that same courtesy? That's all I'm asking.
Well, listen, Randy, I respect your opinion, like I said, there is a problem. I don't feel that I went over the policy personally, because I didn't create a declaration of state of emergency, because I didn't feel legally I could, because we weren't in that situation. I did confer, of course.
Again, you're not a lawyer, you're not the, you're not the borough lawyer. I am, we're the borough solicitors. You could have consulted us, we would have given you an opinion as to whether you were doing, what you needed to do in order to accomplish what you wanted to do. That's all I'm saying, it just prevents, an ounce of, an ounce of prevention, you know, is a pound of cure. I'm trying to make this easy, so you don't get yourself in a jam, and I don't know why, I don't know why I have to, in a way, beat, beat that into you. I'm, we're trying to help you, we're not trying to hurt you. And if you would have just sent us that, and we would have noted, been known, known about it, we could have attempted, we would have attempted to help you and resolve the problem, working with the borough manager and council.
Well, again, you know, I would hope that, you know, you let me finish my statement here. I absolutely sent it to the manager, so, the manager knew. And again, I wanted to keep everybody in the loop, you weren't in the loop, I'm sorry that that's offending you, but obviously you were, the manager forwarded it. And I also did discuss this with a solicitor who's, you know, I wasn't going to get this detailed into it, you know, being jumped in here. In section 108, 06A, I'm sorry, D, in emergencies, it says the mayor has to do what he has to do. Of course, I'm paraphrasing that, it says the power is granted to the mayor to effectively preserve the peace. And so, they didn't feel that, me telling them, listen, the chief said he's bringing people in, I was relaying a message. But anyway, we're okay, I'd like to move on. I just talked about MIMS, and I hope, as I was saying, that, I don't know if any of the new council members have been mentioned before, I don't know if they've actually had the time, or taken the time to complete those courses, and I just hope they take that serious. And there was a webinar just a few days ago, it was called by the PSAB, the Police Use of Force in Local Government Oversight. And I actually was able to log in while that one went, and if anyone missed it, I do believe they are archived, and anyone from the borough can check it out. But, one of the interesting things the first speaker said just before he finished up and then went to the second speaker, is he was talking about the rights of assembly, and one of the things he said was, you know, he said you have to ask yourself, will there be enough police to protect the police, and will there be enough police for the safety of the protesters? Well, interesting, has it related? But, moving on, I'd like to discuss a couple more items here. One is, why did this write down a ticket? I'd like to mention something regarding banning vehicle stickers that are used at times in our borough. On social media, it has been implied that I am responsible for a resident receiving one. Of course, this is incorrect. A few years ago, there was a seated councilperson who got written up as well, and received one of these stickers in front of their resident. As I recall, that person didn't accuse me or anyone of earmarking him. And tonight, I'm mentioning, I think for the first time, that my own daughter got written up, she got the same ticket in front of our house. The difference was, she didn't go on social media accusing me of being the driving force behind that. And if you know the relationship I have with my daughter, you know I don't miss an opportunity to tease her about her getting the ticket for her inspection in front of our house. And, um. So, it's unfortunate, I think some people may or may not believe this, but I've never asked the chief or anyone from the MPD to put one of those stickers on any vehicle. But I do think it's important that this situation that I mentioned should actually show and demonstrate that, you know, not only is no one targeted, but the police department clearly does, prepares, treats everyone the same. Like I said, even members of my family and other people. But I think that's an important note, how everyone is treated the same. I did notice on an action item tonight, actually, I think Tamita mentioned it might be, just curious if there's been an actual appraisal for that property. I think that's important, the council knows what they're working with. And lastly, I'd like to mention that I received a contact, or I should say, by Representative Lawrence's office, and they mentioned that the bridge repaving is going to start this week. And that's a 10-dot project, of course, and I just wanted to make sure that our residents were aware of that progress, and please be careful as you make your way around town. That is the extent of my support, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We're going to move on to the 8B, Police Chiefs Report.
Efer, are you with us?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Just very quickly, the, as everybody knows, the department's been working very hard the last few weeks. I'm hoping things are starting to calm down a little bit. Yes, I did go over 60-hour limit for one of the officers. They, something I could not avoid. And if anybody would like to discuss that in the future, when situations like this does come up, I think there should be some kind of leeway. I really don't want to get into too much tonight, but there is, there is an ordinance tonight discussing a job description for the chief of police. I really, I had no input into this, I really thought I should have. But I would like to see a whole separate ordinance that's for the emergency manager. You're mixing police chief and emergency manager in one ordinance. I think, I think that should be taken separately, yeah. I would have liked to, I would have liked to have been involved a little bit, but I was not. All right, thank you. Bye, for now.
All right, moving on to 8C, do we have a junior councilperson?
Did our junior councilperson join us? Nope, don't think so.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to nine action items. Nine A's, call for a motion to adopt an ordinance establishing a job description for the position of police chief. Can I have a motion, please?
Removed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
I do have a couple questions. I realize we paid our attorney to write up the job description, and I'm hoping that, you know, I'm still, what was, what was the ultimate goal for this? Like, there, we, we can borrow, and we've talked about this before, even our own attorneys talked about this. You don't, you don't start from scratch, you borrow, you beg from others, you look at other, other peoples, and that's how you figure it out. And I was, I don't know whether they got a list from the chief first to say what, you know, what, what he does in a day. And I'm hoping that, that, when someone, when you do job descriptions, you go to the person that's doing the job first, and then you can investigate after whether it was, whether there's a shortage, whether there's more that, that was in there that you didn't realize. Just a couple of things that I don't see any mention of in this particular ordinance. In fact, it's funny, I see Kathy mention it, too. There was no mention of the administration staff who he directs daily. Now, I realize they're staff, and they are under purview of our borough manager. But he still is their immediate supervisor, so I think that there was nothing mentioned. There's no mention of his duty and the, how he has to retain and dispose of all records per the Pennsylvania Historical Museum guidelines. That's not mentioned in there. And control of the evidence room, whether it be in the building or off-site, because we used to have an off-site trailer. The no spending until approved by borough manager, I understand if it's over the budget, absolutely. But if it's within, within the budget, I'm not understory, understanding why we're putting those straps on. And then, there was no mention of the duties that he's required. He has state reporting duties as well, he has to, he has to do other reports with the state. And obviously, his report, even during emergency, if he was not the emergency management or manager, he would still have to report certain, have certain reports to report to the BMC. I just, I just think those were some of the things that I did not see in the ordinance. And maybe others feel that they're not necessary. And I'm not asking to delay this completely, but I am saying that I think that there's, and, and, um. So, anyway, that's where I stand.
If I may, I have to agree with Nancy to some extent. Not having, and I know, I know this will get twisted and bounced around any way you like, but have at it. Us not having an agenda meeting puts us in a position where, here we are, we're going to talk about it for 10 minutes and then make a decision, if it, maybe 20. But we're going to talk about it for a few minutes, and then we're going to make a decision where, when we had an agenda meeting, we were able to ferret this stuff out, make adjustments, come back to the next meeting, and have a consensus on how something like this should go. Now, if we have to do that, it's going to be a whole nother month before we can take action on things. But I'm actually of the mindset that it's probably, it probably needs a little tweaking, not necessarily a lot, but a little tweaking, just to conform to our little municipality a little better. I don't have the same issues that Nancy has, I'm not going to sit here and go pick through line by line, but certainly, I think that, I, I think that there are some tweaks that could be made, not necessarily have to be, it's a well-written item, but I think some tweaks could be made on it.
Well, if I can interject a little bit here. This document has gone through several drafts. We utilized several resources to develop it, including the Borough's Association. So, we looked at numerous examples, and it was circulated to all of you, the mayor and the police chief, three or four weeks ago, and we've not received any comments from anyone, except the police chief, whose comments were reviewed and some changes made.
And that's a point taken, that's a point taken, Scott. I, I don't disagree, I could have put it in an email. I think sometimes the, the conversation is really what I, what I'm missing of it, of other people's ideas, and maybe something that I miss that we, that we can add value to. And that's what I mean by the discussion before it's finalized.
I agree with Mike on that. Just putting it in an email, sending it forward, doesn't, doesn't allow for all discussion. If I could, I'm sorry, this may go through or not, I don't know, but one other thing I, I noticed, and this is for Randy, actually. Number three in the ordinance, if you look at number three in the ordinance, the last line, it, I think it's missing the word "not," but would you please read that out again? I, actually, I don't have a printout of that. It says, does anybody have it? Randy have it, or? It said that this ordinance would be passed if it was illegal, and dot, 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 dot. I think it should say, if it was not illegal, we would pass it. Am I making any sense?
Are you talking about, this is Scott Holbert here, from Randy's office, are you talking about the number on page three, number, the number three, the big number three?
Right.
Yes.
I think that's just the legal jargon, saying that if any.
I think it's a, I understand what you, Nancy, I understand what you, I got disjustified. Yeah, we can word it better, the "not" is actually coming in at the end. Maybe, maybe that's where the exclusion is, we could probably, if you would like us, we could tweak that a little bit and put it up front, but yeah, I understand what you're saying, how it sounds like it's saying the "not" should be, would not have been adopted. But yeah, the "not" is coming in at the end there, it's not coming in at the beginning. That's something we could tweak if you would prefer it stylistically.
Well, I'm not an attorney, so I, you know, whatever's legal is okay by me, but it just, as I read it, it looked like it said that, it looked like it was missing. So, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, the word "not" is the fourth of the last word in the sentence.
Right.
In the paragraph.
Yeah, so what it's saying is, if such a legal invalid or unconstitutional section clause, sentence, part provision had not been included, that's where the "not" comes in. Legally, it's the same effect where we put the "not" there at the beginning. Yeah, it is. But from a clarity standpoint, if you would prefer it to be rewritten, we could do that as well.
Well, whatever's legal.
Okay.
Well, it's legal, it's a question of what you like better. It's, it's legal either way.
Not just me, I mean.
No, but it's legal, if you're asking me if it's legal, the answer is yes. That's what it says. But, could it be slightly, more, a little bit more artfully said?
I think it.
I'm not saying it, I'm not saying it couldn't be.
I think it reads to the non-legal mind better if you put the "not" in the beginning, but that's just.
My question is, if it's read by another, another attorney or a judge, they'll understand what it means.
That is correct. A judge or another lawyer will understand what that means. That's not, that's not to say that, it doesn't matter, we're not, you know, this was through Gerber, I think Mike did this, the ordinance, the chief looked at it, it was gone back and forth a few different times, so, it's fine. We can change a word, it's not, that, that will not change it at all.
Can I get back to Mike's point? So, what are we going to do with this? Do you think? What's, what do we want to do?
Right now, we have a motion and a second. You want to table it, and somebody make a motion to table it.
Well, what, what is the problem? Like, why are we tabling it? Because people haven't had enough time, or they want to make changes to it? What, what's the purpose? Well, I.
Plenty of time, because we got it like a month ago, and there was plenty of time to make changes, there was plenty of time to have emails, and replies to emails, and then more replies to emails, and none of that happened. So, obviously, this shouldn't be that big of a deal, either vote yes or vote no on it. If you like it, vote yes, if you don't like it, vote no.
Well, that's straightforward, Scott. Perhaps we could, we could vote on the substance and say that we approve it effectively, substantially in the form that is presented, subject to, it might be some minor stylistic changes or some drafting changes.
I don't think you can do that, because it's.
No, no, what you could do is, you can vote to approve it, and if you want to, then amend it at your next meeting, you can do that, make it, make the changes at that point. But you should have an ordinance on the books. I mean, it's important to vote to have something, but I'm not suggesting that, you know, you couldn't make changes to it.
I'd like to suggest that we do not send it to our, to our e-code yet, until we make those other changes. If we're actually going to be looking at it, looking at any changes or additions. So, is, is that possible? I mean, we, we do that periodically when we can or have the money, right? We're not sending it, not immediately sending it over.
It is possible, yes, but technically, we should send the document that was adopted and the amendment when the amendment is adopted.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
If, if you do one at one meeting and one at the next meeting, technically, both will probably be in that same batch, because we don't send individual ordinances and resolutions at a time, but. Because we don't send individual ordinances and resolutions at a time, but-
Well, the only thing we'll have to say that it was amended on touch and touch a date.
Correct.
What is it you want amended, Nancy?
Oh, well, when I brought up, I thought we're, we're something that we should look at, but I, if, but again, these are my thoughts. It doesn't mean they're yours or somebody else's or Mike's or, and Mike says he might have a couple of things that I'd be curious to know. I mean, I, you know, whatever this body wants to do, I'm okay with it. But I do believe that it would make more sense to get it right the first time than even talk about having to amend it in the future. I mean, we're, we're going to pass it with the talk about amending it in the future and I just, I don't know if that's the proper way to do it.
If it makes you, I can just tell you that our, since we defer a lot of these things to Labor Council as well, obviously, because it's, Labor Council has approved this, this ordinance. If that makes you feel, if that gives you any comfort.
Does supervision over individuals in his department necessarily have to be in his job description?
Well, remember, you want a job description to be specific enough, but also plain vanilla, that it doesn't eliminate any flexibility. And you're not talking about this police chief necessarily.
I know.
This is going to be a job description and an ordinance that's going to apply for all future police chiefs unless or until such time as this ordinance is amended. So you want to think kind of broadly with it.
I brought up the evidence room because that was a big issue a number of years ago when there was not, the control wasn't there like it should have been. And I just wanted to make sure that, that we do have control of that.
All the duties, all the duties of a police chief that he's required to do are incorporated in this. Not every single thing that he does during the day is in there. Any law, he's required to abide by all the laws of the Commonwealth, of the council, federal, all those laws, all those are part of this. And it doesn't have, we don't have to state each and every law that he, that he, there's a myriad of laws that a police chief has to be involved with.
Yeah, that'd be a big book. All right, well, whatever this body wants to do.
Is there anyone else?
I just have a quick comment from Mr. Mitchell. I take exception to you saying nobody contacted you about this because I called you and we spoke. But I'll forgive you for not remembering.
That's right, you know what? I apologize. There's always one in every bunch. No, yes, you did, you did provide a comment, yep.
All right, if there's no one else, there's a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call on this?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Drysback?
Yes.
Ms. Alahal?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
No.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Hey, motion passes seven, one. Nine B, a call for a motion to authorize the sale of borough-owned property located at 30 Hillcrest Avenue, parcel ID 24-009-405, to authorize the issuance of written notice to the tenant pursuant to the terms of the lease agreement and to authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment of the property. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion, so we can have discussion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion?
Mr. President, I got notice from someone that were waiting in the public comment section to comment, and I think specifically on this item. I understand we're past public comment, but given this is a new process with technology, can we possibly give them their time to talk?
I don't have a problem with it, but as long as the solicitor is okay with it.
Whatever council wants to do, I'm fine with it.
I think you need, I think you officially need to open or open the public comment again and then hear their comment. Because the next person-
Well, if it's been moved, seconded, and you've had council comment, you can open it up.
Yeah, on any item, you have a motion, a second, council can comment, and then the public can comment. There's no issue. We don't have to open anything, it's all perfect.
Let's finish our comment first, so council members?
I would like to comment.
Go ahead.
You know, when we discussed this, council discussed that we were looking into, you know, this property and what could be done with it and possibly, you know, selling it and maybe some development on there. One of the things was mentioned was the R D A, but it was not exclusive to the R D A. And I'm just wondering, what other avenues did we take to try to get some, you know, some other, somebody else in there? Now, we've spent, I mean, we just found out about, like, we never had any communication prior to this about how it was going or what we were going to do or who was going to get, you know, who was going to do it. And then we get, you know, the bill for, to do the paperwork, 2900 plus Tobine and Martin, their attorney fees. And again, I just, there was no communication as to the process along the way, but yet, here it is. You know, it's now, the R D A, the R D A is going to, and they're using the blight, which I, the blight and condemnation, which I was, I suppose that's the swiftest way for them to do it. So maybe that's why we're going that route. But I also wanted to know, well, I'm hoping that a complete title search was done. But why, and I saw it's not recorded in the Recorder of Deeds, and then also that it is not open to the public or any public record. So I guess I need the attorney to tell me why that's that. But yeah, I just, I think that, I just didn't think this was the route that we're going. I mean, we have other, we have other places in town, the R D A is, yeah, he's got his hand up, okay. The R D A is, is, you know, a part of, but I'm not, I'm not comfortable with this.
In fact, I can, I'll defer to the solicitor on the legal issue, but in terms of communication, this issue was discussed with council on two executive sessions earlier this year. I think you were in both of them.
I was. And we just, we did discuss the possibility of R D A, but we did say exclusively. That was not, when I left the room that, that night, that was not what I was expecting. I thought we were going to look for a developer.
I actually thought there was a consensus to go with the R D A because they had, they have the ability to have a broader selection of what can be done with the property and actually pick a better project, if I remember that right.
Well, I'll let the solicitor speak to the law, but I think when I suggested that council consider utilizing the R D A, it's because if council goes to list this property for sale, you're bound by law to take the highest responsible bidder. You can't be particular in who that is or what their intended purpose is for their property. The R D A, on the other hand, can be more selective under their operating law. They can vet various potential bidders to see what their proposed project is and what best suits the borough's interests and award it to that entity, whether they're the highest responsible bidder or not. I'll defer to the solicitor on the, on the law there, but that was what we had discussed and I thought council was clear in its direction that it sounded like the R D A was the way to go.
That's how I remember it.
Randy, do you want to add to this? You were there.
I mean, Scott and I were doing, but I'll, I can, I was at, we were at those meetings. That's what council voted to do. I mean, we're just following council instructions. That's what they wanted to do, they wanted to, the R D A gives the council a lot more flexibility because you then have control as to what kind of development you're going to get. Whereas the other way, it's just you're listing a property and somebody can buy it and not develop it. And you don't end up with any, you're trying to increase your tax rolls or whatever you're trying to do. I mean, it's, it's, this is a policy decision that only you can make. This is not a, you know what I'm saying? You can sell it, you cannot sell it. That's not our, that's not a decision that the solicitor makes. That's the only decision that council can make, that is out of our purview. But, but from a legal standpoint, the manager is correct. If you're going to do it, you're a lot better off with the R D A.
Zoning will be an issue now also, right? Is that correct?
Listen, those are all issues for someone who buys it and the R D A will have a lot easier time with that. The R D A, all the municipalities, especially in the lower end, do a lot, as you know, with the R D A, and they do amazing work redeveloping properties and have a very fine track record. Whether you want to do that with this property is up to you, but that's what council instructed us to do. So that's why we did it.
Yeah, this is a relatively small project for the R D A, but this is, this is in their wheelhouse. I mean, this is their, this is what they do.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, there were just some, there was a question or two about the agreement. I think one of the questions involved Paragraph Seven, this agreement shall not be recorded in the Office of Recorder of Deeds. That's in there, that's a, that's a pretty standard language you'll see in sales agreements. The reason being, once the deed is produced, under the law, it's called the doctrine of merger, that sales agreement merges into the deeds, so only the deed is what gets recorded. So it's two separate things, two separate documents being signed and entered into, and the deed is the final one which will be recorded. The sales agreement doesn't need to get recorded.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
If I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, anybody who's been following since I've been on knows that I'm all about development, redevelopment, and I actually have no concerns with the way that the R D A operates. I got a lot of experience dealing with them. I think that they're doing good things for us and, and they did very supportive of Morrisville Borough. But I have to play devil's advocate for a second. Although I, I, I am a supporter of, of bettering this town. And this is definitely a property that can put, that can give us a little bit more money in taxes and could actually probably help that street a little bit if it's a nice, if they do a nice build there, it could help the neighbors. We also have to think of the, I'm going to say the same thing, let me back up. I'm going to say the same thing right now that I said when Joe McGrath came to town and said, he's going to do all this stuff to where Morrisville Little League is. And I looked at him and I said, well, what's the plan for Morrisville Little League? So we have a decision to make, and although the Little Bulldogs aren't Morrisville Little League, they are a sports team for the kids in our town and surrounding area in a time when our school just announced that there will be no sports. So we have to, as we're making this decision, really consider what's best for the town from a timing perspective also. And although I'm not saying that, that I'm opposed to that property being sold and redeveloped, we, we need to ask ourselves as we're making this decision, who it's affecting and make sure that we're doing more good than harm.
I'd like to comment, I agree with Mike. I also agree that the timing for this, it was discussed a month ago and now there's, you know, pandemic. The children have been out of school. Sports are just back in the session, it's just getting into football session. I'm sure that the Morrisville Bulldogs will be probably started by now to get ready to start summer practice. And I think giving us a 50-day notice would crush them. And I think we should consider tabling this and deciding, talking about it more and making a decision at a later date.
Does that, a table motion, Justin?
No, just to say, yeah.
Okay.
Do we know exactly what the building is used for? I know it's used by Little Bulldogs, but for what? Is it to store their equipment? Do they have meetings there or do they just hand out their equipment there? Or exactly what do they do?
Sure, if I'm aware, it's used for storage.
Do we have anything down at Williamson Park that they could use?
I don't know.
This could be, this could be a win-win situation where the Little Bulldog might be able to partner up with the, with the Little Lake, you know, reach out to the Little Lake because, you know, the baseball season, there's several ones that are dead down there. And I mean, even if the Bulldogs could share some of the, some of the cost of the, what, what the Little Lake has to pay in the town. You know, I mean, I mean, listen, I'm, I'm completely pro-sports. Oh, I want every kid to be able to play, okay? But, you know, the Little Lake is kind of was put through the grinder the last couple of years and they, you know, they, they, you know, they pull together and, 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 you know, they get it done. And the Little Bulldogs can do the same thing. I, I don't, I don't think that the taxpayers of Morrisville should be, you know, 8,900 people should be sitting, you know, paying the rental of a building to store helmets and shoulder pads in for, I mean, even, who knows how many kids in Morrisville are even involved in the program? But we have a roster of how many kids in Morrisville play in, you know, other towns. I mean, the Little Lake gets the same scrutiny. So I, I think that, you know, they can deal with the Little Lake, I'm sure they're very approachable. And we can make a deal with them and, you know, maybe help the Little Lake out with some of the financial burden that they have with running a program within the borough.
It's been very beneficial, that dollar a year rental that they've been paying has been very beneficial over the years. That's a pretty iconic building from years ago. It serviced many people when it was the J C building. Because you had all, multiple places, multiple community met there. You had, you had Boy Scouts, you had Girl Scouts.
Isn't the building in disrepair? It was my understanding that it needed work.
Whoever the buyer ultimately ends up being would most likely tear it down.
Yeah. So at some point, the Little Bulldogs won't be able to use it either going forward.
Well, the fact that it's, it's difficult to access, you know, because it's, well, it's not A D A, but even with that, sometimes the steps are a little treacherous. So it's almost, it's almost a liability.
So there's some days you drive by, I drove by yesterday on my way to work and it looks like an abandoned building. The grass is like a foot high.
We're not displacing them from playing, we're just, they, they just won't have a place to store their equipment or whatever else they may do in there.
Conduct their business, right. That's, that's what we're talking about. And whether, whether, I mean, there's all kinds of great reasons to be done with it. Like I said, I'm all about beautifying the neighborhood, but we've just got to be mindful of what this vote means.
Is there any facility at the A field that they could store their equipment in?
There's a building, there, there's a storage building there. I'm not sure what, what's in it, but, you know, that, that's, that's a conversation that could be had with the school district as well. Especially since it's closer to the field that they actually use, that might, that might be beneficial to them.
Or they have to go old school and everybody splits it between three houses. In the meantime.
All right, anybody else?
Well, there's somebody online who wants to talk, right?
Exactly, that's what I want to do, I want to go to public comment if everybody's done.
Yeah, is the person on the conference call line, do we know, or?
I believe so.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Hi, you wanted to make a public comment?
Yeah, my name's Bill Arson, I'm the president of the Morrisville Little Bulldogs.
Yeah, if you could just state your name and address for the record and then you can make your comment.
Bill Arson, 523 Barclay Avenue. You get that?
Yes.
Yep, you're good.
Okay. Yeah, I'm the president of the Little Bulldogs. We use the building quite often during the season and off the season for our meetings. More than just storage for the equipment and stuff like that.
No, it was just some background noise.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, what does that land cost the borough?
I'd say right now, it doesn't cost us anything, but if we need to repair the building, that's going to cost us money.
Right. I know, I think it was Scott brought up baseball, which I was totally against the whole baseball thing. So it's two different situations. You have the borough workers down there and stuff like that. And that building really not costs you anything. And it has a place for, for kids to go, if they wanted to go. We meet up, we give things out to the kids every now and again. I know the grass is, is tall, but- I know the grass is, is tall, but, but the weather, the grass is growing pretty bad. I was there two weeks ago and cut it. Um, we're, we're just, it'll depend from it.
Bill, can I interrupt a quick? I saw the borough workers there doing work on that building in the back, like, a couple, like, two weeks ago. Why were the, the borough workers were working on that property? So that's, that's, that was the cost to the borough right there.
Yes.
That wasn't my choice. And if I'm not mistaken, the way they cut it was probably for the stumps, for the trees that were never taken, or taken down. I mean, that, that was just my assumption.
Councilman?
I was there probably a day or two afterward.
Yeah, councilman, if I can just clarify, we, we, we had public works there clearing the fence line at the rear of the property, uh, because some trees and growth had to be removed. I think there was, may have been some storm damage there at one point. Um, that was a, a one-time thing, we don't regularly maintain the property.
Okay. All right. I mean, I know somebody part of the dollar thing, I wasn't a part of that, so, you know, that's, that's from years ago, with the, with the dollar thing. Um, but trying to, somewhere we'll find a place where we can meet and stuff like that. I mean, we barely get by with, uh, with fees and stuff like that. We're not as big as Little Lake. Uh, I mean, that would crush us, and being, like, like Justin said, I mean, high school, their sports are pretty much going. Uh, they're, they're not even sure if they're gonna have sports. So instead of having the kids barre around on the streets, not staying in their bed, but kids are kids, you know, give them something to do. Um, yeah, I, I don't know what, what else to say. And one other thing, you know, I was kinda like listening, or hearing this like last minute, oh yeah, um, I wasn't involved in anything before this notice.
Not the last time we, we heard things last minute this far off.
I know, I'm, I'm just saying, yeah, the communication, you know, of things, kinda tough. I just heard about it the other day. And apparently, I'm listening to you guys, it was an executive session, somebody got reached out, "Hey, look, this might be going on." Trying to give us a little bit of time to maybe look for a place or, you know, kinda like last minute, I don't know how long, you know, it's gonna take or, or what. We have, over the last couple of years, we have been improving, we painted it, fixed the outside up, um, stuff like that.
Yeah, Mr., Mr. President?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Uh, yeah, I was, I pretty much, I had to say, Mike and Justin pretty much said what I was gonna say.
Okay, Mr. President, someone here in the studio audience, uh, would like to ask a question, if you're open to more public comment on the issue.
Uh, yeah, we're open for public comments, so let them.
Yeah. I, I know you already did, but if you could state your name and address for the record again.
We can barely hear Scott.
Um, can you?
I can't hear a thing.
Can you make sure the mic is on, maybe take it out and hold it, uh, so that people can hear you?
Okay. Catherine DMC, uh, 401 Hillcrest Avenue again. I don't understand what we're doing here right now, but we came up tonight, they gave public comment, and now we're opening again, so I would like the attorney to explain to us why we had to reopen public comment. I know I took the time out of my day to make sure when I saw an agenda, I had this icon on that I got myself, you know, got myself in the door, if not, I would make sure if I had the ability to zoom in, I would have zoomed. That's how much I, when I saw this on, uh, social media, and that's exactly where I saw it, that you were even thinking this down in this property. So I will rephrase what I said in the first comment, was this 9B as written says 30 Hillcrest Avenue. Now, is that whole parcel, the building that has the number 38 on it, and it includes the empty lot? So we know what we're talking about, because I was trying to figure out where 30 Hillcrest was, if the physical building had 38.
It's the entire property.
It's the entire property.
The building to the corner, yes.
Um, as you say, I guess it was Ms. Sherlock, maybe, that said, "You're taking this from light and condemnation." I'd like to know, when did you blighted and condemned? I find it totally appalling that you are going to, I understand that your executive sessions, and I understand it was, you're gonna classify this as, uh, real estate, so that's fine, you could all be in executive session. But I do find out if nobody had the courtesy to contact the people, the tenants, that hold the lease, if that's written, this to the tenant, to the terms of a lease agreement, when is the final day of, when this third lease expires? I understand it's the hour night, I understand public works are cut past, I can tell you as a personal resident of Hillcrest Avenue, and looking at what happens in light of parking on that street, yes, they're there, they're not just there storing equipment, I've seen them, I've seen activity in the building as I've gone up and down. And I would claim that a better use of this would be, once we get to the redevelopment authority, I'm sure they're gonna put a twin or more housing on it, and I'd like to see, due to Francisco and the parking issues, it's already a mess from the base of Hillcrest all the way up to the first block of Stockton. And I just keep finding a problem that if nobody even spoke or reached out prior to this, but I really wanted out, how did it get blighted and condemned? Thank you.
Well, I can clarify that for you, it has not been blighted or condemned, so.
So why were those ones blighted and condemned?
I couldn't tell you.
Is that not the wording in the?
If the solicitor wants to comment as to why public comment on this issue was opened for a second time, I'll stop talking so he can do that. I'm just the studio manager here tonight, you know, coordinating the.
It was just in the interest of, because of the pandemic and because of the, the limitations that this has, um, it's just in the interest in the spirit of the Sunshine Act and the open meeting law, to give chant people a chance if they had a question. I don't, I don't think that's a bad thing, I think that was a good thing that council did.
Mr. Solicitor, in general, is there any rule that keeps us from doing that?
No.
No.
I didn't think so.
And we were actually asked by a council member, uh, if we could, and we, you know, I didn't hear any objection, and I actually asked the solicitor if it was okay, and he, he said it was, so, you know, I mean, I, I, again, I agree with the solicitor, I mean, this is new technology, well, not new technology, but it's new to us, and, you know, nobody's really sure when they should call in, and, you know, I mean, so I have no problem with opening it up again. I also think, just as a public policy matter, we will bend over backwards to allow the public to comment whenever possible. Absolutely.
The normal situation is people complain because you try to ram something through and you don't let people talk. This is just the opposite, we're going out of our way to let people speak their mind, whomever wants to speak, so I don't, I think it's a nice thing you guys did.
I, I think it was a great thing, if I may add something, there's been previous councils that almost act like they're allergic to the public, and I, and I, and I do want to hand it to, uh, to, uh, Council President Parker tonight for openly, um, allowing a comment, which, of course, that was a subject that's near and dear to a lot of people in the, in the community, but Ted could have very easily said, "No, public comment is closed," like it's happened so many other times in the past, and people being shushed from the day, so, um, thank you, Ted, for, uh, for allowing people to speak tonight, thank you.
I have, one second, I have a question. Um, if we approve this, if we approve the agreement tonight?
Back again, Ken.
What are we, what are we looking at notice-wise for, for, for the Bulldogs who are the tenant?
The, uh, if I may, uh, Mr. President, the lease, um, that was originally entered into back in 1985, it calls for a 30-day notice period. So from the time we would send out a letter, officially notifying them that we'd be terminating, the borough would be terminating the lease, it would expire 30 days thereafter.
And you're not limited to that.
You're not, that was just gonna say, but, but, Mr. President, I'm sorry, you could, you could say to them that you, you want to give them 90 days, 60, you know, pick another number, and we'll, whatever you want to do, that would be fine as well.
I mean, well, the motion doesn't, doesn't give a, a date, so.
Correct.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's open-ended to allow, you know, until, I guess, you know, allow them time to, to try, or, or even the borough trying to help them find something, accommodations in, in the borough. Um, maybe, maybe, maybe reaching out to the school district is, is another, another, uh, another avenue.
I reached out to the RDA today, just asked them, um, if we were to pass this, if they would consider if we asked, um, if the Little Bulldogs could stay there through their season, since it was kind of last-minute notice. Uh, the response back I got was that the RDA is willing to work with us with whatever we want.
Yeah, and that, that's what I was trying to, to, to say, I mean, it's, just because, you know, we, we're moving along with this, it doesn't mean that we're, you know, we're kicking anybody to the curb to, you know, at the end of 30 days.
Mr. President, the question you had, council had, was what, what does the lease say? That's what the lease says.
Right.
You don't have to, that's the minimum, but there is no maximum. So if, if this council, if, if the council feels that you want them to go through the baseballs or whatever season we have left till September, that's a perfectly reasonable, um, caveat to put on the motion, and we'll abide by it, if that's what council chooses.
Can you put the caveat that, uh, they can stay there until, um, the RDA finds a buyer or decides what they're gonna do with the land? That could take six months.
Yeah, I don't.
Take a year.
I think the problem running to is, once you transfer ownership to the RDA.
Yeah, but no, the RDA is gonna own the property. Once we transfer it to the RDA, once that takes place, they will own it.
But our agreement with them could be modified to say that we'll allow.
However, however, if you give them a sufficient amount of time, if that's what you wish, you may accomplish the same thing by saying, you, they have 90 days or X amount of days.
Um, given that this isn't a critical emergency and there's no pressing on it, I'd like to make a motion to table it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to table and a second. Uh, I guess we'll do a roll call on this.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Halaho?
No.
Mr. Parker?
I'll table it, yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
I'll table it, yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Yager?
Yes.
Motion is tabled, seven to one, if I counted it correctly.
Yes, seven to one. So there's no more discussion, I get that, so I'll have to get with the attorney or Scott to ask my last question about condemnation, because it reads agreement of amicable condemnation, so, okay.
Yeah, that does not mean that the property has been blighted or condemned, that's just the, the legal process that would be followed.
But doesn't it say from, uh, never mind, I guess I, I'm sorry, I, I guess I can't keep asking questions. I have to look at the, the next attorney letter mentions the blight. Thank you.
So that means that the Little Bulldog lease also has in there, am I right, um, that they, they should be renting out that building to any resident that needs it for any kind of meetings they have? Is that going on?
I don't believe so.
No. No, it's not being rented out.
It's never, yeah, it's, it's been exclusive, to my understanding.
But the lease doesn't have it as being exclusive, is that something we want to let the residents know, that they have the ability to use that building as well, then?
You want to get more people using it before you put, do, do away with it?
I mean, you tabled the motion, when are we going to do away with it? Probably not till January, right? We'll probably reopen it.
No.
Next month.
Oh, next month? Oh, I thought it was more for a longer period of time.
I, I, no, I, I suggest, my suggestion would be, is if we're concerned about where that, where, you know, where they have a facility, maybe we should all work towards finding something for them.
That's exactly the plan I was talking about, uh, Ted, thanks.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I make a comment just on the process? Not specific to, to, um...
Just make it quickly, because we're only on 9B.
Sure, we had a couple of comments about people not knowing about this, and I just want to point out that it's an executive session item, for executive session, we can't comment on it until after the body votes on it, or has discussion on it, just like we don't have discussions on personnel matters or other legal things that are just an executive session, just how the process works.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to 9C, which is a call for a motion to approve the conceptual plan for Patriots Park. Can I have a motion?
Sound it.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Uh, I have a question. I don't see it listed, and maybe someone knows, uh, the columns that exist now at both entrances, are they, will they be staying? The stone columns from 1930s? They're pretty sturdy. I would like to see them stay, but they're not on the, they're not on the plan.
Hey, Laura, are you still awake?
Yeah, I'm still here. Are you talking about the brick problems, um?
Yeah, can you comment on that?
The entrances of that inroad?
Yeah, the, both ends of the driveway, I believe, is what she's referring to.
Yes, we are gonna maintain those.
They will stay. Can we have those added to the final, 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 final plan?
Yes.
Okay. It is, it's currently on, at least the one, it says "Existing driveway apron with ballards at climber entrance."
It does.
The other one just says "New driveway, uh, at existing driveway apron with ballards." Maybe it's to clarify existing ballards. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll clarify that on the final, final, final.
The driveway will be new, Justin, but the entrances will remain the same.
So the radius of that road is gonna be, you know, widened.
So you're widening the road but not the entrance?
Yep.
Okay.
The radius is widening, not necessarily the road.
Right, okay.
Laura, I have a question, can you, uh, indulge us with what the differences are between the concept plan that was approved, uh, a year or so ago, and what changes have been made to this one?
Yeah, so we, basically, I'm looking at the concept plan dated from October 7th, 2019, um, and then I have the new one that you guys all received recently. Um, the major difference is the parking lot. We had originally, um, wanted to expand the, the existing parking lot to hold more spaces, but then we have since reduced that to the same footprint of the existing parking lot, um, to save a little bit on construction costs, um, and pervious for stormwater. Um, the other additions were adding some flag poles, um, you know, having the state flag and the USA flag and the county flag. And another addition was to add another statue, uh, the Robert Morris statue being next to the George Washington statue in the, uh, new Stone Dust Plaza.
Well, they were the best of friends.
And, um, the last thing was just adding pedestrian lighting and, um, security cameras.
Yeah, but, in, in terms of process, this... Yeah, but i- in terms of process, this started as a conceptual plan, like Laura said. Council provided input, the public provided input, historic, Morrisville society provided input, Summer Seat provided input. But what you see now before you is the culmination of all of that input since that time. Uh, in fact, I think something was removed. Uh, Laura, didn't we originally have something on Summer Seat's property? They didn't like that and we took it off, so.
Yeah, that was a garden.
Yeah, there was the garden that we didn't want to put on there in a walkway.
Yeah, so everybody's had their finger, has their fingerprints on this thing. But we need to get it to some point of finality because we actually need to start looking for construction money or this thing's never gonna start.
Is the borough paying for any, like, i- is this all being taken care of through grants? Or is there a portion of the expense that the borough is going to be responsible for?
Uh, most of it will be paid for by grants, like has been done with it so far. But uh, the borough will have some soft costs related to it uh, between engineering and legal. And depending on the grant funding sources, because there will be multiple grant funding sources involved, there may or may not be a match requirement at some point.
Do you know, like, an estimate of what the soft costs would?
Match out the uh, the matching, the three different grants as much as possible to eliminate the borough's uh, money being put into it.
Yeah, like always.
The design, we have some matching money that the borough had to put up for it, but for construction, we're really trying to match as many grants as possible, so that the borough won't have to put up, you know, big costs for.
We will do like what we're doing with the library roof and try to stack a couple of different sources. If there's a match required, that way we can use another grant source as the match requirement, so it doesn't have to come from borough money. I believe Mr. Robinson had a question.
Yeah, do we, do we have an idea of a, of a ballpark figure of what this could potentially cost us? Like, we want to go build a park, it's gonna cost us money, but we have no idea. Like, we have a dollar amount, like, we're gonna pay up to and including twenty thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars. Like, I'm sitting here, like, I have no idea how much this could potentially cost us. It could be zero to, what's the, Laura, if, if, now, we, we've already heard that basically a lot of it could be covered, but how much, how much could this cost us? Could you say?
So are you talking about construction of the park?
I'm talking about the day that they cut the ribbon when they're completely done, from now until that day, how much money is gonna have to come out of the taxpayers' pockets of Morrisville to finance this new, this new park?
I mean, so uh, we've done like some estimates, um, based on the current design. So construction costs can cost between, I mean, probably between one point six to two million dollars overall, but we phased it out. Um, so we would phase it in stages that would um, that, you know, work for permitting.
I, 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 I don't know, I don't know. How much is it, how much will, will it cost taxpayers of Morrisville? If I go down to the car place right now to go buy a car, I know how much money I'm willing to spend. And if I, if the car costs too much, I'm walking, I'm taking the bus home. How much is this park gonna cost the taxpayers?
That's up to you and the rest of us.
So for now, nothing, because we're trying to get DCD money and CDVG money to match against each other, so that
the borough won't have to pay a dime for it. So that's what we're trying to do, and it has worked in the past for, if you were involved, you saw the demolition of the school. Um, you know, that was both DCD and CDVG money matched to cover the cost of that. Um, so that's what we're trying to do, and you know, we've been working with both, you know, agencies to try to make that happen.
So what was the soft cost? And we will try to speak to the borough.
Mr. Parker, I have a question.
I don't think Mr. Robinson's done, you're gonna.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Um, I just wanted to, Scott, what would be the soft costs as legal, legal expenses? That we would, that we would have to pay?
Well, the soft costs on uh, engineering is anything that would not be covered by a future grant that we haven't even contemplated yet. And likewise, the legal would be to review anything that has to be publicly bid uh, before it's publicly bid uh, for something also we haven't pub, we haven't contemplated yet. So uh, these are guesses right now.
Okay. And what happens down the, down the line if this, this, this park is half completed? And uh, uh, we don't get a grant, the grant doesn't come through. And we're sitting there and the, the, the residents on Climber, Harper and uh, Legion have to look at a half completed park for five years.
Well, the, the.
We're evaluating all types of grants, especially, you know, like, if we get an RACT grant that, you know, they fund millions of dollars towards these types of projects.
Now, Laura, I don't want to sound disrespectful, but you're saying evaluating and you're saying if.
Yeah, because there's no certainties here.
Instead of say.
I mean, I can, you know, wave a magic wand and say, yes, we're definitely gonna get a grant.
Yeah.
But we've been successful to this day with CDVG and DCD, and they're on board with this project.
So there is the possibility that the residents, my neighbors on, on uh, on Harper, Climber and Legion could be looking at a half completed park. That, that is a possibility. Because we don't have a couple hundred thousand dollars in our, in our bank account in the borough to fix the park in three or four or five years if the grant doesn't come through.
Well, yeah, but Scott, there.
I just want to know what the costs are gonna be.
If I can call this to order for a second, they're looking at an uncompleted park right now. And they have been for two and a half years.
Well, it's a big deal.
Now, the idea is to phase this over two or three phases and for it to be paid for with grant money. If council is happy with the park in its present condition, we will stop working on this project. It's one less thing we have to do. We got other work we can be doing. But if you want us to proceed to the finish line on this thing, these are the steps we have to take, and we cannot predict every step that's going to happen in the future to a ribbon cutting that is gonna take place maybe three years from now, maybe four.
So. Personally, if I may, personally, I'd like to see it completed. Um, however, in speaking to some of those same neighbors, because they're my neighbors too, um, they've all expressed how happy they are that they're not looking at a blighted school that was getting broken into on a regular basis and vandalized. They are looking at a field that people can't use as a drug den because you could see straight across it now. There's viewpoints from everywhere, where before there was a lot of hiding places and it looked horrible. So I want to see it done, but I could tell you, there's people that live right on those streets that are thrilled they're not looking at a blighted building right now.
I, I just wanted to add something real quick.
I agree, I, I, I agree completely. I, I didn't even like drive it by it.
All right, I, I, I wanted to say something. When we, when we first acquired this property, I mean, this actually started back when I was in school board. And, you know, then the borough acquired the property, and then we didn't have a way to take it, to take down the building. And then we worked on it, we worked on it, and a grant was found, and part of that, major part of that was found by the mayor, and then there was other matching grants, and that's how it worked. It, it went from, you know, getting the land through the open space and then trying to figure out how to take the building down. And, and everybody worked on it, and, and, you know, we got it done and the building is down, and, and it, it, it's a clear field now. And, and to be fair, when you were talking phases, we're not talking like build half of something and then just leave it there for five years. You would, you would complete the project so that it's in addition to the property that's there, and then you move on to the next phase and that adds another layer to the park. Um, you know, it, it's, it's not going to be an unfinished construction site. It's, you know, I have faith in that.
Yeah.
It's good work you did, Mr. Parker.
That's been the history with this park from the beginning, is because, I mean, we're already, what, six years into this, seven years into this?
Eight years from, eight years from the beginning, yeah.
It's being done pieces at a time because you're relying on other people's money to do it.
Mr. Parker?
So at any time we can stop work, like if we, the grant doesn't come through, we can pause the work until we find a grant to pay for the work.
We're not gonna start work without a grant to pay for that work, because you don't have the money to do it otherwise.
So Laura, what, what do you consider, what do you, if you were to do an estimate, what do you think the estimate of your soft costs will be for the project?
I don't know.
You know, I can't answer for her, but I, I think that's an unknown. Because every time there's a grant, she's gonna have to do something. If we don't have a grant, then she won't do anything. So.
Most, most of the time, the grants, there's an initial cost to apply for the grant. Then when the grant, we're awarded the grant, then, you know, the engineering costs, the legal costs are rolled into the grant. They, they're paid for by the grant, which is why we go for the grants. There'll be a soft cost, but that'll be the application and, and, and if there's, you know, we already have a design, so that's already done. And that's what we submit, and then there may be some, some minor things added to the application or requests for additional information. But at this point, there's no way of knowing. We may just be able to send off the plans and, you know, with a grant and, and pay like what we're paying now for a grant, you know, to, to do a grant, so.
Well, I think Laura may have a better idea than the two of you, no offense, so.
But no, I, but I think she said that.
My question was to Laura, um, if she had to estimate what she thought her soft cost would be, what would they be? Like she said, it's gonna cost two million dollars for the rent. Is it one percent?
It's a fee, I mean, um, just to fill out the application and do all the work, but there's also grants that we have in place, you know, like doing the estimate for the construction or like phasing it out, but some of that cost can be absorbed in an existing grant that we have. Um, so that our application cost isn't as high. Um, so, you know, that kind of thing with this concept plan, you know, we could put under the grant, but um, you know, we use it for a grant application, so that they have an exhibit to see like what we're proposing to do for construction. Uh, so we try to keep our soft costs as minimally as possible, you know, we recycle grants. Um, so we need an application cost anywhere from a grand to six grand, really. Depending on if it's a new application or a new project, or uh, depending on who the um, grant is through, what agency is through.
And you're not gonna win all of them the first time at bat.
She may, she may not. All right, Ms. Sherlock, you had something and then we're gonna move on.
Yeah, I wanted to know, the, the parking, uh, that's, that's for this park, that is not, we're not shared parking with uh, Summer Seat, is that correct?
The.
Summer Seat will all be off, off, off uh, I'm sorry. That's my question.
Can you repeat the question?
Um, the parking, the parking lot that's in the plan is for this park. It's for Patriots Park, it's not for Summer Seat. Is that correct?
What's the status of the parking lot that exists today?
Uh, the neighbors use it.
Okay.
The neighbors have trucks there, the neighbors, everybody uses it, so I mean, it's a public park.
I guess when the parking lot is done, council will have to decide what limitations and restrictions at once on the parking lot.
Yeah. Um, because.
I, I think you've got some time, you've got about two years to work that out.
And I, and I think that's, uh, yeah, might even be three. Uh, the other thing is, at the corner of Legion and Climber is a memorial to, to war heroes. And we have a woman who comes by and cleans that up on a regular basis, and I thank her for that. Um, so, but it's not on our property, it's on, it's considered part of Summer Seat's property. So I don't know, this is something for the future, maybe we can uh, you know, make sure that that is somehow, I'd like to, you know, we're gonna put up all these statues and it would be nice to also commemorate the actual war heroes that lived in town, that worked and died in town, and then, you know, died in the war. So, again, it, the memorial doesn't belong to us, but if we could incorporate that somehow uh, some way in the, in the long future, I'd appreciate it. I think that'd be nice. I don't, I don't know the history. It's been there, I know it's been there since after the First World War. So I don't really know who even owned it. Well, the school district must have owned it when they owned Summer Seat. So.
Can I also add one thing? I know that um, there are statues that are going up uh, at the park. Is that something that we should talk about as a group considering um, that uh, some, some, some public thinks uh, some statues are very offensive? And I'd hate to see something happen to the park because um, of the offensiveness of the statues.
I think we're years away from that even happening to, the park's gotta be built first and get the money for that before we even consider the statues.
I know, but we're, we're approving a plan that includes the statues, and I think we maybe have to put a notation that, that the statues may not happen.
Well, the statues may not happen if you can't get the money to pay for them, too. Not just because someone might be offended. But I, I think that's probably gonna be a decision for council like five years from now to wrestle with, but.
It is a concept plan, right?
Council, yes, if council would like a footnote somewhere, we'll, we'll make a footnote.
I, I think there should be a footnote. Okay.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Can we have a, I guess we'll do a roll call on this one.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Alahal?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Yeager?
Yes.
A motion passes eight zero. Um, Councilman Bowers asked for a five minute recess so that we could uh, use the facilities. Uh, I know I sure could, so uh, we could take a quick break. I remind you, please turn off your cameras so that you don't do anything inappropriate during the break.
Take five, everybody. Done with one bullet.
Does that include me doing, doing sixty miles an hour on the turnpike? Can I just like pull over and use a bathroom now or what, Scott?
Yeah, you're good. We're, we're on, we're on a take five.
Okay. I think I'll pull it over and kind of pee on the side of the turnpike right now.
Well, hopefully you have like an emergency jar or something when you're on long trips. Laura, are you still with us? You survived, hang in there, because uh, we're coming up to the early grants and we, uh, there might be questions.
Oh my gosh.
I figured.
I had asked, uh, I had. I had asked Ted uh, about the uh, the cost of them, and I know that that was answered today, so that's, that's, thank you, that's gonna save time.
Yeah, we, we, we've used Skype. Yeah, we have that. Yeah. Yeah.
I think you can kind of do with this too.
Yeah, the, the only, the, the shame of it is Zoom plus all of the other programs that we've used or looked at or that other people are using. Unfortunately, none of them are compatible with the old technology that's in here for the cable channel. Or else we could have everything integrated into one thing, but, you know, beggars can't be choosy, so.
Plus, your, your, your pay grade tonight is studio manager, not production director, Scott.
That, that's right, yes. Yes. I want to get one of those things where it's like, take three, you know? Yeah, yeah, take three.
There you go.
I miss having my representatives actually at the meeting hall.
Yes, apparently we've got more public comment.
We do.
We do.
Oh.
Uh, just so everybody know, I have to leave at ten fifteen.
Okay. We will not be done by then.
What do you mean, we won't be done?
Are you in the borough, Scott, are you in the borough?
Nine oh eight.
You're somewhere else.
I'm at my pedestal on the dais, yes. I'm in the command center.
Okay. Who else is there? I guess Virginia's sitting down in front of you?
Uh, actually, Virginia's down in her office. Micah is here at the conference table. John Leder is in the media booth. And we had a couple of members of the public in the audience here.
Really? Look at that. We're, we're getting back to normal then, huh?
Uh, yeah, looks our way. And we're all safely socially distanced, so I don't want to get calls and letters tomorrow.
Next month we'll be in the building?
I sure hope so.
What's that?
Next month we'll be in the building? The meeting?
Uh, that's up to council.
I think so. I don't really like the Zoom meetings. It's hard to hear and, and talk.
It is, but we're also gonna have to continue the social distancing, so we're not gonna all be up on the dais.
That's fine by me. I can sit down. It's a big enough room.
Everybody back or?
Terry, are you with us? He may have zoned out.
Well, there's seven of us.
Bob just stepped away, but I don't know.
Terry, I see we've got somebody half-connected. It says connecting to audio.
That's Eileen on, I guess it's her computer, but she's on with her iPad as well.
Oh, she's on twice?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Eileen, do you need to be on twice or can we eliminate one of these?
No, you can eliminate. I'm on my iPad.
Okay, could you disconnect that other one, Terry?
Um, yeah. There we go.
All right, everybody's back. Let's get back in session. All right, we're up to nine D, which is a call for a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the borough engineer to submit an application in the amount of $454,823 for the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program Grant through PennDOT with Pennsylvania Avenue and Philadelphia Avenue intersection. Can I have a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Second.
We haven't moved and seconded any discussion? All right, we sure? No discussion? All right.
Mr. Robinson, are you still on?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose you.
Okay.
Roll call.
All right, hearing none, discussion, roll call, please.
Virginia.
Virginia.
Did we lose Virginia?
Maybe that's why it got quiet.
All right, I'll do it.
I got it.
You got it? Okay. Stop on the floor, Scott.
Yeah. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysbach?
Yes.
Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Nine E, call for a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the borough engineer to submit an application in the amount of $544,737 for the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program Grant through PennDOT for Pennsylvania Avenue and Trenton Avenue intersection. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Drysbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Halaho?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Uh, nine F, call for a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the borough engineer to submit an application in the amount of $199,520 for the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program Grant through PennDOT for upgrades to the existing traffic signals with battery backups, generator plugs and preemption. Have a motion?
Some of.
Second, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just quickly, I understand this is supposed to take care of six traffic lights. Can I just have those locations?
I think this is for six intersections, isn't it?
Six intersections? I'm sorry.
Can you rattle off the intersections, please?
Uh, hold on, let me keep that up to estimate.
That would be all of them except for Route One.
As fast as I could just reply to that email that you guys had floating around.
Uh, why don't you just read it out if you don't mind? That way it's part of the record. We'll wait.
While we're waiting, this is the battery backup and so forth.
Intersections are West Trenton Ave and Plaza Boulevard, West Trenton Ave and Pennsylvania Ave, East Trenton Ave and Delmore Ave slash Calhoun Street, Bridge Street and Delmore Ave, Bridge Street and Pennsylvania Ave, Philadelphia Ave and Pennsylvania Ave.
Actually, it sounds to me like it's every single signalized intersection in the borough.
And how nice would that be with brand-new paved roads to have the nice new lights installed? That would be really nice.
It did not mention the one when you come off of Route One? It's actually ours. I mean, there's been back and forth about that, but my question is, so these battery backups and these additional things that we're voting on is in addition to actually getting the lights? So you get the lights and then this is like accessories? Is that a better way of putting it? Right? Is that right? Okay. So it's the accessories. Thank you.
But these will also be retrofitted to work with what's there if we get them right? Yes. This is so that if we lose power, not that that would ever happen in Martha Borough, but we don't have to have the police and public works scrambling out to put stop signs at dark intersections because we'll at least have some period of battery backup. And even in a situation like Superstorm Sandy where you're out for an extended period of time, like nine days I was without power, we have the ability to take portable generators and hook them to plugs to the traffic signals to keep traffic signals working.
Mr. Parker?
And the winds that cause the outages blow over the stop signs they put down anyway, so the stop signs only stay up for a half an hour.
Right.
That traffic light up on Trenton Avenue with Plaza Boulevard by the front lane, is that our traffic light or is that Laura's?
No, that's the borough's. The one at West Trenton Avenue and Big Oak is not ours. The one at Plaza Boulevard is ours. Yeah.
If we don't, if we don't get.
Excuse me, excuse me. We had two members speaking at once. Mr. Robinson, finish your thought.
This is for the sector for the emergency vehicles to go for this. That's all that is, that's going to do for these traffic lights. So the one at Bridge and Pennsylvania is going to remain a timed light that takes forever for people coming down Pennsylvania Avenue and stays green all the time on Bridge Street.
Yeah, this is for backup power sources and emergency preemption. Yeah.
That's it. Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, I think I interrupted somebody.
I have a question. So if we don't get the, if we don't get the grants for new lights, is I think, I guess this maybe is what Justin was saying, that if we get the, we can at least get the accessories to, you know, at least have that happen for us? Is that right?
Yeah, we can still do some of that in anticipation of future signals.
Okay. So we can still have the preemption even if we don't get a new light? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President, I believe it's been moved and seconded.
It has. Uh, all right, if there's no other further comment, then can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysbach?
Yes.
Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
That was another squeaker, eight to zero.
All right, moving on to nine G, call for a motion to award a contract for installation of ADA curb ramps at certain locations subject to the availability of grant funding to NJS Concrete LLC for a total contract amount of $56,425 for the base bid and alternate bid number two only. Have a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Quick question. Actually, it's for Justin. Justin, we mentioned, or you mentioned Taft and Trenton Road last time when we talked about these ADA ramps? Now, that was the sidewalk misting. Is that included in this at all?
It's a separate grant, right, Scott?
Say that again?
I believe it's a separate grant. It's a different grant.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Drysbach?
Yes.
Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Eight to zero. I'm sensing a thing tonight.
Yeah. All right. One more before we go to exec session. So it's nine H, call for a motion to award the contractor to repave the front parking lot of your municipal building to T Schaefer Contractors, Inc. in the amount of $16,790.40. Can I have a motion?
Some of.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Comment. I actually think our borough manager could have handled this with three quotes. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Parking lot, I think we have roads that are much worse shaped than the parking lot. And I don't think we should be paving the parking lot at this point.
I agree.
Is that like a reasonable cost, $17,000 for a parking lot? And then you said in the last meeting the parking lot wasn't that bad, Scott?
Me, Scott?
I said that. Scott disagreed.
The front parking lot is in rough shape. It's been excavated three different times over the years for water leaks. And I view it as a trip hazard and we wanted to redo it last year while we were repaving Union Street because it only made sense. We were there, we were going right by it. But at the time, a section of it was dug up for a water leak and it wasn't, didn't make sense to do it then, so.
What if we paved it and we have a water leak, another water leak, since this seems to be like a road to water?
Well, I'm told that that's physically impossible now because there's no water pipes left under it that carry water.
Do a lot of the, do a lot of the residents parking that parking lot?
And if that's not the case, I'm going to bury some people in that parking lot.
So do a lot of the residents park in that parking lot or they mostly park on the police lot?
Uh, no, both parking lots get used, yeah. Also, there are some, I believe there's a handful of houses on Union Street that don't have off-street parking. So in fact, some of those residents park in our lot at night.
So do we have money in the budget for this?
Yes.
All right, nothing further. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowers?
No.
Mrs. Drysbach?
Yes.
Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
No.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes. Budget's right.
I think we have some absentee ballots coming in from overseas.
I hope somebody wants to count them.
Probably fraudulent.
I think with no hard Scott's push for this, he's got his name on one of those spots when it's repaved.
I've never in a million years would I thought the little parking lot would be so controversial with you guys.
Was it five three?
I'm sorry now I ever brought it up. Let my, let whoever think.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I counted right.
Twenty lashes for you.
All right. That's the end of the action items. We have a exec session. I don't know how we handle that through Zoom, but do your magic.
We're going to, we're going to need to take a minute to do some repositioning here.
Right, because you can't have the public in and people who are not part of our council or their legal council or whomever to be there.
All right, I'm going to pause the recordings and the live broadcast and then I'll
Yes.
get notification when I can re-enable them afterwards.
Just double check that. Make sure it's super, super.
Yeah, it'll be my Tom Bates moment. Yeah. We stopped the recording.
I'm going to stop those right now.
Mr. Mayor, do we still have you?
So there won't be any voting after this?
Yeah.